Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible tragedy. This video covers the first half of the testimony given at the US Coast Guard's public hearing by Guillermo Sonline, the man who co-founded Ocean Gate with Stockton Rush. My regular viewers will know that this is a testimony I've been eager to cover on the channel. And while it hasn't proven to be exactly what I was hoping for, at least this first half of it, I will, as usual, not go into too much right now and save any opinions or discussions for the end of the video. I will also do my very best to get the second half uploaded within a couple of days of this one, so that things are still relatively fresh. So, without further ado, as this is another video that will clock in at over an hour, let's get started and hear from Ocean Gate's co-founder. Thank you for clicking on this video and for your ongoing support of this channel.
Can you please provide me a little bit more information about your background, specifically your educational background and work experience prior to the formation of Ocean Gate?
Yes, I can do that. Before I get started, I just wanted to thank you for inviting me to participate in these public hearings and then also for allowing me to testify remotely from Europe. I know you've got a big job ahead of you and hopefully my brief testimony here today will help add at least a little bit of value to your efforts, even if all I'm doing is adding color or context to what other witnesses are presenting. So, thank you again for allowing me to participate. To answer your question directly, let me start at the beginning. I was born in Argentina, raised in California and San Francisco Bay Area in Silicon Valley. I studied economics at the University of California, Berkeley, worked for a couple of years at a law firm and then went to law school at the University of California College of the Law, San Francisco. It used to be called Hastings when I went there. Upon graduation, I took the California Bar, passed, was admitted into the California Bar, even though I really had no intention of practicing law. What I actually did when I graduated law school is I went into the Marine Corps. So, I went there wanting to be a scout sniper platoon commander. So, I went through Officer Candidate School in Quantico, Virginia. Then I went through six months of the basic school, also in Quantico, Virginia, learning how to be an infantry officer. When it came time to graduate and pick my MOS, my military occupational specialty, I graduated high enough in my class that there was actually a slot available for scout sniper platoon commander. But for personal and family reasons, I made a decision to choose 4402, which was Judge Advocate. And so, from there, I ended up going to Newport, Rhode Island, spent three months there, learning military law, studying with my fellow Marine Judge Advocates as well as members of the United States Navy and United States Coast Guard Judge Advocate Corps. From there, I was stationed at the Marine Corps Air Ground Combat Center in 29 Palms, California, where I spent approximately three years. The first 18 months or so, I was the installation law officer, which meant that effectively I was the legal advisor to the commanding general, who at the time was a two-star major general. And then for the second 18 months, I was the senior defense counsel at the base. From there, I came off active duty in one July, 1999. I remained inactive, ready reserve for the remainder of my contract, which I believe was another four years. When I left active duty on one July, 1999, I was in O3, captain. And I believe that when I came off active duty, my DD-214, I believe says O4, I think I was a major. Now, when I came off active duty, what I did is I moved my family to San Francisco and I co-founded an internet company. It was 1999, going into 2000, it was the height of the internet boom, we were ground zero in Silicon Valley. We took that company and rode the dot-com bubble all the way up and we rode the dot-com bus all the way down in 2001. We managed to sell the company to a venture-backed company called Vaxeo. And I stayed on with Vaxeo for, I think, another 10 months after the acquisition. During that time, I moved my family from San Francisco to the Northern Virginia area, to the East Coast. After, and I left Vaxeo in February of 2002, as that company experienced some financial issues and went through a round of layoffs and I was part of a group of people who were laid off. From there, I decided I was going to start another company. This time, I wanted to be in a field that I was passionate about. And I thought that field was going to be space. It was either going to be space or oceans, it was going to be one of those. In 2003, I started a nonprofit organization called the International Association of Space Entrepreneurs. At the time, Elon Musk had recently started SpaceX. And so, there was a big group of us who wanted to encourage the next generation of Elon Musk and bring them from other industries into the space industry. So, that was the objective of IASC. That was in 2003. 2006, I started a for-profit company called Space Angels Network. And the objective of that organization was to connect accredited individual investors with early-stage space ventures looking for C5. And I ran that company until 2010, so a year after we started Ocean Gate. I turned it over to one of my co-founders, he ran it until 2014 or 15, he turned it over to somebody else and that gentleman relaunched the company, rebranded it as Space Angels, he is still running it today. And because of his efforts today, that is, I think, by a lot of measures, the most active early-stage investor in the space, in the global space community. Now, the reason all of that's relevant is because through Space Angels Network in 2008, I met a gentleman by the name of Graham Hawks, a former aerospace engineer who was also a submersible designer. That was my first introduction to submersibles and the submersible world. And a year later, and I was fascinated by it, so I actually spent the greater part of 2008, most of 2009, going back and forth from my residence in Northern Virginia and where Graham was, in California, in the Bay Area, basically on a consulting basis, helping him with his business. And in that way, I learned about the submersible world and the submersible community. The reason that's important is because in the summer of 2009, Graham introduced me to Stockton Rush. And Graham, Stockton and I decided we were going to go into business together. We co-founded, very briefly, a company called Deep Flight Technologies. Lasted only for, I'd say, a couple of months or so as Deep Flight Technologies. Graham decided to leave that and that left me and Stockton to start a company. And that is when Ocean Gate became founded. So, I walked it through a lot of detail and I know it was probably more detailed than you were looking for. But the reason I did that is because at the time of founding of Ocean Gate, I believed that what I was bringing to the table and what I think Stockton believed I was bringing to the table was leadership experience, because Stockton was going to put money in, but he was not going to run the company. I had startup experience, especially with Silicon Valley kind of disruptive innovation kind of mindset. I had experience with investors and fundraising. I had a legal background. We knew that we were going to be dealing with a lot of government and regulatory compliance issues. I wasn't going to do that work. I knew we were going to have to hire legal experts to do that. But it was nice that I had a legal background, so I would know how to talk with the outside counsel. And then, even though I didn't have sub experience, a sub operations experience or maritime experience, I did have field ops experience during my time in the military. So, I think, kind of, I gave you a lot of detail, but summary, I think those were the kind of bullet points that I brought to the table when we started.
Why did Mr. Graham Hawks leave Deep Flight Technologies and not move on with yourself and Mr. Rush for Ocean Gate?
Yeah, that is a great question, but you should probably ask Graham. Because I'm not sure exactly. I know that the three of us came to an agreement on putting Deep Flight Technologies together. I got along great with both Graham and Stockton, so my deal was fairly easy to carve out my role in that. And as soon as we came to that agreement, I think it was like in August of 2009, I immediately started the process of relocating my family from Virginia to Seattle, where we were going to have this new company. But we still had to, you know, paper the deal, as they said, right? We still had to lock down all of the legal agreements. And Stockton and Graham had a lot more nuances to their agreement that they were going to have to negotiate. And it was typical of co-founders coming together, right? Having to negotiate different points of the deal over a couple of months. And I think ultimately, they ended up having a difference of opinion on enough things that they just decided it was not worthwhile.
When and where was?
But again, that's a great question to ask Graham, because I really don't know his side of this.
Understood. When and where was Ocean Gate LLC founded?
I'd have to check the official records, but my recollection is somewhere around October of 2009. And we were in Everett. I don't remember where we incorporated, if it was in Delaware or in Washington.
And what was the original vision for the company when Ocean Gate was launched?
How much time do I have? So, I'll give you a short answer and then maybe a little bit longer answer in the context of these public hearings. The short answer is that our vision was to create a fleet of four or five deep-diving submersibles. At the time, we were thinking they'd be 6,000 meters, capable of carrying five people, available for charter anywhere in the world and with no dedicated mothership. When Stockton and I got together in a conference room in front of a blank whiteboard and started mapping out what the plan would be for Ocean Gate, that's what we came up with.
You had mentioned the vision of no, without a dedicated mothership. Was this, what was the purpose to not utilize a dedicated mothership, to be able to have it mobilized throughout the world?
Well, this is where we get into the longer answer. So, you'll have to give me a couple of minutes and kind of walk you through this. Because in order to understand that, you have to understand the competitive landscape and you have to understand the general state of the submersible community. Back then, and honestly, it hasn't changed much in 15 years since then. There are not that many subs in the world. Those of you doing the investigation probably got an immersion course in this over the last year. There are not that many active submersibles in the world and certainly none in the private sector. Will Conen knows the numbers better than anyone, so when he testifies, you can ask him. But I think there are less than 100 active submersibles in the world. And almost all of them dive relatively shallow, less than 1,000 meters. And as Patrick Leahy testified on Friday, the average depth of the ocean is 4,000 meters, which covers about 65% of the ocean. So, the bulk of the subs that are out there today, as in 2009, go relatively shallow. And when you consider that the ocean covers 70% of the world, the planet, it's nothing as far as trying to explore or study the world's oceans. So, we wanted to change that. We wanted to give humanity greater access to the ocean and specifically the deep ocean, anything deeper than 1,000 meters. And initially, like I said, our goal was actually 6,000 meters, because 6,000 meters gets you access to about 98% of the world's oceans. So, that was kind of our goal. So, you have to work backwards from there, which is, you know, why is there not enough access for humanity to dive deep into the ocean? And one of the key questions, key reasons for this is kind of inherent in Patrick Leahy's testimony. And by the way, I've known Patrick for years and I have full respect for him and I loved his testimony on Friday. But one question that no one asked Patrick and that he didn't volunteer and is not on his website is how much does subs cost? And you can imagine from these intricate machines to be made as safe and as versatile as Triton subs are, they're expensive, they're millions of dollars. And they're also generally heavy. And because they require a mothership or a support ship, that support ship usually has to have a crane big enough to take the sub in and out of water. Usually, that's an A-4, which means the ship is, you're instantly talking about a very big ship. And because of that, most of these subs are basically mated to dedicated motherships. And this is true of the government subs too. There are five deep-diving, I think five, deep-diving government subs in the world. The French have one, the Americans have one, the Japanese have one, and I believe the Chinese have two. And each of those is mated with dedicated motherships, which means that you can only dive the sub wherever the ship is. And it takes a lot to move that ship, in large part because it needs a lot of fuel, which is a thing. And so, if you're trying to explore the world's oceans and given how big the world's oceans are, having five government subs, five government ships, or now the only other deep-diving sub that I know, which is the Vakonawa, formerly the Trenton built, limiting factor on one ship, that's six subs in the entire world with 8 billion people. It's, you know, to use someone else's words, it's a travesty for humanity that there's so few subs available to go into the deep ocean beyond 1,000 meters. So, and I know this is a very long-winded answer to what seems like a very straightforward question, but as you work backwards from the cost of the subs, the cost of operating these subs, the number one factor is actually the fuel on the ships. And the number one factor driving the fuel on the ships is the size of the ship which is driven by the crane. And so, the thought that we had early on was if we could have these subs be pre-positioned around the world and have them so that they could operate off any ship of opportunity, so you didn't need, needed mated with a dedicated mothership. So, you could put it in a container, standard shipping container, ship it anywhere nearby from wherever the home base was, find a local ship that could be used, put it onboard and operate it from there. We would increase the access that humanity had to the deep oceans. Let me stop there, because I don't even know if I answered your question at this point, because that was, we're not fine.
No, you did.
A few tangents there.
Thank you. Was carbon fiber always a fundamental part of the plan for the Ocean Gate submersibles?
No. In fact, developing our own subs was not in the original plans. When we started Ocean Gate, it was just me and Stockton and a commitment to each other that we were going to make the floor. He was going to put in money, I was going to run the business. We just needed to figure out what we were going to do and how we were going to do it. At the time, we had absolutely no intention of building our own subs. Now, what we did intend to do was buy a used sub, so that, you know, I mean, we ended up calling it our training wheel sub, so that we could learn more about subs and we could learn more about sub operations. So that when we went to build this fleet of four or five subs and deploy them around the world, we would know what we were looking for and we would know what capability those subs needed to have. So, immediately, within a couple of months of founding Ocean Gate, we had the opportunity to purchase Antipodes, which was an ABS class 300 meter bi-processes, which we did buy. And we operated for the entire time that I was there until January 2014. While we were operating Antipodes, in parallel, we were trying to develop the plans for deep-diving subs, because keep in mind, the vision was to have 6,000 meter capable subs. Antipodes was only 300 meters. So, we knew Antipodes wasn't going to be our answer. We knew we had to find other deep-diving subs. So, we did a few things during the time that we were operating Antipodes. And one of them was to talk to all the sub builders to find out who could get us these five subs that we wanted to pre-position around the world. We talked with Phil Mooton, we talked with Patrick Leahy and the partner Bruce Jones of Triton. We talked with Will Conen and his brother at Sea Mansion. We talked with the folks at U-boat Works. We talked with a lot of people. And every single one of them was willing to sell us one of their subs. They were willing to take our money and build us a sub. After all, that's the business that they're in and they're very good at it. The problem was that we had very specific business requirements for these subs because of our vision. And when we put the business requirements to each of them, none of them seemed to be able to deliver what we needed to have delivered. And after a while, you know, when you're faced with that conundrum as an entrepreneur, you've got two choices, right? If you based your whole business plan on having certain technology and now the people that can build the technology are telling you it's not possible, you've got two choices. Well, I guess one choice is you could shut down the business. But if you wanted to keep the business going, you've got two choices. You either change your business model or you find a better engineering solution. And Stockton, being the engineer that he was, he opted for finding a better engineering solution. Because during the time that we were doing this over a period of a couple of years, we had talked with enough other engineers that we, and Stockton in particular, convinced ourselves that it'd be possible to build a sub that would meet all of our business requirements. And so, you know, this is, again, a long-winded answer, but initially, we weren't even going to build our own subs. You know, the big business innovation for us was the business model, which was chartering the subs instead of selling subs. And I guess that's something I kind of left out of the competitive landscape, right? That, and again, it's still true today, that if you want to dive deep, if you want to go deeper than 1,000 meters, today, your only choices are to A, Triton, to build you a deep-diving sub, or I'm sure Sea Mansion would also do it for you, for U-boat Works, in which case you're spending millions of dollars, millions of dollars to buy the sub. It's going to have to be on a mothership, so you're going to have to spend tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions, on a big enough ship. And then you're going to have to spend millions of dollars per year to operate the ship with the sub. And for certain people, that's perfectly viable. And Triton's very good at what they do, Sea Mansion's good at what they do, U-boat Works is good at what they do. And they make amazing subs, but the only people they can sell those to are essentially wealthy individuals. They've sold subs to tour operators and to cruise ships, but it's usually, those are usually their shallower seas, their deeper subs. I have to ask Patrick or someone would have to ask Patrick, but I'm willing to bet that every deep-diving sub that they built beyond 1,000 meters has been sold to a private individual who puts it on one of their yachts. And just completing that, you know, the flip side of that, so our first innovation was, look, if what we're trying to do is open up access to the deep oceans and one of the big limiting factors is money, because not everyone has tens of billions of dollars to do this, then we need to bring the cost down by at least one order of magnitude, if not two. So, one way of doing that would be to figure out a way of building cheaper subs. And that wasn't something we were interested in, didn't want to do. So, the other way of bringing the cost down is to change the business model. And so, the way we innovated the business model was basically to offer these subs on a charter basis. Back in 2009, if you wanted to charter a sub, there was nowhere that you could go to charter a sub. Sadly, today, there are only two places you can go to charter a sub that I know of and neither one of those operations has a sub that can go deeper than 1,000 meters. And so, our objective, our innovation initially was a business model innovation. We just went out as a charter and not as a sub builders. Sorry, Commander Whalen, you wanted to ask another question?
So, 2009, 2010, at what point did you change the business model to then go to the charter and then to the actual building of a submersible? Was that while you were involved, still involved with the company?
There's a couple of nuances in your question. So, let me see the easiest way to answer that. So, while I was still there, we started realizing that we were going to have to build our own sub. That was definitely while I was there, because we did start coming up with plans for how we would do this, right? That's also when we came up with a plan for, we start, I think that's about the time that we started looking at carbon fiber as a potential alternative for pressure hull. And as Patrick mentioned before on Friday, that's not a novel idea. People have looked at carbon fiber before. In fact, we had both, Stockton and I had both been introduced to carbon fiber by Graham Hawks, who had developed at least designs for a full ocean depth sub using carbon fiber. So, it wasn't innovative. It was just, it was just something that we started looking at while I was still there. So, we started exploring the idea of a carbon fiber hull. We started exploring the idea of building our own sub, how we were going to do that. So, that's about the time when we kind of came up with essentially a three-phase growth plan for the company. The first phase was the one we were in then, which was basically kind of the startup mode, get Antipodes, get comfortable with Antipodes, get comfortable with subs, operate the sub. Phase two was going to be get comfortable with building a sub. What does it take to build a sub? And then phase three was going to be actually having the deep-diving subs that would end up being this fleet of five subs around the world. At least that was the discussions that we were having at the time while I was still there. So, we kind of came up with that, with that plan. The reason I thought your question was a little nuanced is because we did start implementing that plan while I was still there. For that phase two, where we were going to get practice building a sub, what we decided to do was, look, if we're going to, if we're serious about potentially having an innovative new material being used for the pressure hull, let's at least practice just building a hub, a sub with a standard hull. Let's go find a used sub with a standard class titanium steel hull and let's practice with that one. Let's go out and design some of the exterior elements and put them on a proven pressure vessel. And let's do that first and let's test that out. While we develop further this idea of a potential carbon fiber hull. And I think the idea at the time was, look, even if it turns out that the carbon fiber hull is not a viable option, at least we'll end up with two class titanium steel subs. And that's at least something, we could do something with that as a business. So, for that phase two, what we did is we found the Lula 500, which is, I think it was ABS class. ABS class, so that is the Azores that is for the sale. We purchased that one and we were going to bring it back to the United States, take it to Everett, strip it down to its pressure hull and then rebuild it. And eventually, that is what happened, that is what ended up becoming Cyclops. So, the last, one of the last things that I did while I was still with the company in January 2013 is I'd gone to the Azores, completed the purchase of the Lula 500 and put it in containers to ship it back to the US. And what I don't remember, I was actually trying to think of it this weekend, I don't remember if by the time I left, the sub had already arrived in Florida. I think it had. And then we put it, the containers on a flatbed truck and drove it across to Seattle. I don't remember if I'd already left before I left or if it left as I left or something like that, but it was right about that time, the end of 2012, early 2013.
Sir, I just want to follow up on that, on your last statement, or last questioning. So, you had stated that at this point, with the plan, that you had realized that the cost of the plan was, began to be more than what you had anticipated. At this point, did you and Mr. Rush seek any additional funding to help raise capital to meet your plan?
Well, first of all, just for clarification, I don't think I said that the cost was too high, although that was certainly one of the factors. It was just that none of the sub builders could meet our business requirements, right? So, if you think about our business requirements of being able to carry five people, 6,000 meters, without a dedicated mothership, deployable anywhere in the world, none of the sub builders could really do that. Never mind the cost. And then if you did factor in the cost, yeah, it was going to be ridiculously expensive. I don't know, I don't remember exactly when we raised the first funding. I know Stockton had committed to put in a certain amount of seed funding in himself. And then, as we built it out, I think he and his family put in a little bit more money and then at some point, we started doing what startups typically do. You start from there and then you work out to friends and family and then eventually you raise money from third-party investors. And honestly, A, Stockton was the one spearheading the fundraising and B, a lot of that fundraising got done after I left, so I don't really have a lot of insight into that.
With regards to the purchase of the Antipodes and the use of the Antipodes domestically, at this point, did you have somebody on staff who was well-versed in the regulatory oversight of submersibles for domestic operation?
Yes and no. So, for almost everything related to Antipodes, the first thing we did is we brought in Pete Hoffman, who's the man who built Antipodes originally. We were the third owners of Antipodes. And so, we brought in Pete from Florida. He helped us both with the sub and with the ABS compliance. And then also kind of talked us through a lot of the regulatory issues on it. us through a lot of the regulatory issues on it. That was number one. Number two, around that time, is when I started getting, as the CEO of the company, I started getting involved with the Marine Technology Society's Man Underwater Vehicles Committee, which is headed up by, or at the time was headed up by Will Conant. And so, I would talk a lot with all of them, Will, Patrick, all those folks, and they helped educate me on a lot of the regulatory compliance issues. And honestly, I think, at the time, I was probably the one heading up the regulatory compliance. Keeping in mind that at the time, when we talk about regulatory compliance, we were talking about ABS classing the sub and complying with Coast Guard regs whenever we dove Antipodes in US waters. But that was the extent of what I had to deal with while I was there.
Did you understand the limitations of the vessels, of a vessel certificated as a small passenger vessel?
Yes.
And at that time, what did you believe to be the Coast Guard regulations regarding small passenger vessels with submersible operations?
Where do you want to start? You know, there's sub operations, there's the building of the subs and all that stuff. Specifically, what I was, had to deal with the most is obviously the Navic 593, where my recollection, now 10-plus years later, of what that entailed was basically limiting submersibles to three, I believe it was three categories. One is recreational use, in which case, the only people authorized to go in the sub are the sub owner and the, any guests, non-paying guests. The second category was passenger vessel. If you're going to charge somebody to go in, you basically had to comply, I think you talked through this with Patrick on Friday, you had to comply with the regulations that were established in the 1980s to accommodate Atlantis submarines, which, by the way, currently, as far as I understand, as of last year, are still the only three subs operating in US waters, are Atlantis sub, tourist subs, one in Hawaii, one in Saipan, and one in Guam. And then the third category was oceanographic research vessel, which was effectively the Coast Guard taking regulations that were originally designed for surface ships and kind of flipping them over and using them for submersibles. And in which case, the only people allowed to be in the subs were, three categories were the sub owners, the crew, and researchers.
And which of those three that you just explained, did you feel that the Antipode fell under?
It, so that, if you think about that, it's dependent on the actual dive, right? It's depending on the dive op. So, sometimes, you could say that we were operating as a recreational vessel, because it was just the owners or guests. Sometimes, we were operating as an ORV. We never operated as a passenger vessel, that I know, because there was no way we were going to be able to comply with the regulations for a passenger vessel. And by the way, no deep diving sub can comply with those regulations, because they're not, they weren't created for that kind of a vessel.
Did you ever accept payment for a vessel dive or for somebody to come onboard the vessel?
I believe we did, under the auspices of the ORV. And in order to do that, one of the, obviously, Coast Guard, you already know this, but one of the requirements for complying with the ORV is you have to get approval from sector commanders. So, when we operated the sub, I basically helped take the sub to, I guess, on six different, let's call them expeditions, in four different Coast Guard sectors, Puget Sound, San Francisco, LA, and Miami. And so, for all of those, we had to, before we went, we had to sit down with the sector command and walk through everything that we were doing, make sure that we had all the documentation in place. And honestly, it was, it was an interesting educational experience for me, because I didn't realize, in their greater wisdom, the Coast Guard gives a lot of deference to sector commanders, knowing that each sector is different. And so, as we went through this, each sector commander that we spoke with had a different tolerance for how to deal with this strange thing coming into their sector, right? You don't get a lot of subs operating in US waters, especially deep diving subs, even though Antipodes was a shallow diving sub, 300 meters. And so, some sector commanders were open to it, some sector commanders just didn't want to have it in their waters, because they didn't know what to do with it. Some sectors kind of changed, because as you know, sector commanders rotate every two or three years, and sometimes we'd get a good relationship with a good sector commander who understood what we were doing and was willing to work with us. And then we'd make plans to go, and then on the way there, they would rotate out, and new sector commander would come in, and they'd change their minds, and then we'd have to scrap our plans. So, yeah, we worked as closely as we could with each of the Coast Guard sectors on this.
Recorder, I'm going to ask you to please bring up Exhibit 92. Mr. Sunline, it should come up on your desktop. Which was, which was a July 5, 2012 article from Miami Today. And do you recognize this article, sir?
I have no idea. There's been, over the years, there's been a million articles written about a lot of stuff.
Roger, sir.
Is there, is there a specific part you want me to look at?
Yes, sir, it'll be the bottom paragraph, as, on the bottom of the screen there. He said, "Our expeditions are working in the field. Everyone has to participate. We allow citizen scientists to pay, but we hire them as part of the crew."
Yes, Ocean Gate?
Do we know who is making this statement?
Yeah, that's what I was about to ask.
We do, sir, it was you.
Okay, that's what I thought. Go ahead.
Can you scroll down to the top of the next page? "His clientele come from all walks of life. They do have some financial resources. This is not cheap." He said, "Costs can range from $7,500 to $40,000 per person, depending on the length and complexity of this mission." And that was based, that was, that was regarding your plan for the operations to begin in Miami in 2012?
Yeah, that's price sense, right?
Do you remember this part of your business model?
Yes, it was basically trying to figure out what could be done under the ORV model in a way that, that could generate a business model, right? Because if you think about it, under the ORV model, the only people that could, you could charge is researchers, and researchers generally don't have funds to fund these kinds, this kind of work. And we were trying to find ways to get these researchers to the ocean where they wanted to be to go collect their data. And so, we looked at a model that was, that's been kind of perfected by an organization called Earthwatch, where they have people come out to, I think it's archaeological digs, and people pay money to go dig in the dirt and be part of these archaeological digs. And the reason they do that is to support the researchers' work. And so, we were trying to figure out how we could get funding to fund the researchers who did not have the ability to pay for these kinds of expeditions. By the way, that's also one of the, what we ended up doing, even while I was there, with Ocean Gate Foundation. We were trying to figure out how to get scientists to go in these subs, and there were, we thought that the number one cost driver for them was the chartering of the sub. And it turns out, the greater cost for them was the cost of the data analysis afterwards. And so, we created Ocean Gate Foundation as a way of paying for that part of their research, so that they could do the work that they needed to do underwater.
Did you ever discuss this approach, as originally discussed, as we stated in the article, with the Coast Guard Inspections Division? And what was their interpretation of what your business model was?
I don't remember which division we talked to where. And, and I don't remember what their take was on any of this stuff, but what I do know is we did not move the sub from Seattle to Miami until we knew that the Coast Guard sector was going to be okay with what we were doing there, because we were evaluating a lot of other places to take the sub. We looked at San Diego, we looked at St. Petersburg, we looked at Miami, we looked at a lot of different places to take the sub. Basically, we wanted to get it out of the Pacific Northwest and get it further, further south, to get more viable diving days, so that we'd get more experience with the sub. And so, I talked to all of those sectors, explaining our business, explaining what we were doing. Honestly, for every sector, everywhere I went, I had to educate them on what an ORV was, and I had to explain to them what Navic 593 was. And they were constantly calling back to headquarters, because I think Commander Whalen, I think you and I talked about, I think you had, you had an expert at headquarters on this, and I think he recently retired in the last year. They were on the phone with him all the time, trying to get guidance on what to do with this strange thing that was coming into their sector. So, I don't remember specifically who I talked with at the Coast Guard sector in Miami. I don't know specifically what they said. I'm sure there's got to be documentation somewhere, but I do know that there's no way we would have moved the sub to Miami if we didn't have a comfort level that the Coast Guard was going to be comfortable with what we were doing.
Recorder, could you please bring up Exhibit 002? And turn to page 11, which is the Antipodes Coast Guard Missile Activity Summary. And missile is in acronym, which means marine information for safety and law enforcement. So, sir, it says, "The operator had requested permission to have operators pay for a course in operation of the sub to qualify as a sub pilot. We informed the operator that this would be considered passenger for higher consideration, and from there, it was denied." From there?
Yeah, and that's, and that's dated August 2012, right?
That is correct, sir. And then at that point?
Yeah, in short.
At that point, you then contacted Sector San Francisco?
Well, I don't know if I did, because I left a few months after that, and by then, we had already made the decision to stop operating Antipodes, and we were going to focus on building what ended up being Cyclops back in Everett. And we basically closed up shop in Miami, put Antipodes on a flatbed truck, and drove it back to Everett. And all of that happened after I left. So, I'm not familiar with this stuff. And by the way, August 2012 is also right about when I turned the company over to Stockton as CEO, and he was still based in Everett, and we started the process of shutting down Miami.
Recorder, could you please turn to page 17, which was a letter to Lieutenant Commander in the United States Coast Guard? Do you recognize this letter, sir? Which was "Operations Plan for Monterey 2012 Expedition."
Yeah, that does look for me, wait, did I, was this my letter? Did I sign this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because it looks like my formatting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah?
And the second paragraph states, "Even though we generally operate our submarine under an oceanographic research vessel letter of designation issued by Sector Miami, during this expedition, we will not be getting paid cash or other consideration by anyone getting in the sub. Instead, we will be supporting two 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, the Blue Ocean Film Festival during its biannual awareness building event, and the Ocean Gate Foundation during its annual education and outreach program to the Monterey community."
Yes.
So, was this the new business model for Ocean Gate with regards to accepting consideration for these operations to utilize the Ocean Gate Foundation?
Oh, no, because that's not a business model. That doesn't get any money into Ocean Gate, Inc. This is a way of, this was essentially what it says there, kind of raising awareness. This was kind of part of our marketing budget. No, this, because that's not a business model. You can't, you can't make money doing that.
And what was the relationship between Ocean Gate Foundation and Ocean Gate, Inc.?
Well, as I said before, what primarily, at least at the time, what we were using it for was to pay for research grants, for researchers to conduct their research, and to do kind of what it said there, kind of awareness building. What we would do, like in Monterey, what we did is we took the sub there, and then we would put it on display, and the Ocean Gate Foundation would go out into the schools and bring kids out to look at the sub, or we would take our pilots into the schools to talk to the kids about careers in oceanographic research and in ocean engineering. It was, it was very, yeah, it was, it was very, what do you call it, bifurcated, right? The Ocean Gate Foundation dealt with education and science, and we dealt with operating the sub.
And so, where did funding come from to operate the sub?
At that point, investors. Because at that point, I think we'd already started raising money for building Cyclops, and we knew that there's no money in building a product, right? We were going to need funding for that. So, if I remember correctly, I think we started raising some money right about then. And by the way, all of this is obviously in US waters, right? And trying to comply with the Coast Guard's regulations. And as you are accurately pointing out, it is very difficult to operate in US waters as a deep diving submersible under the ORV model, and that's why there aren't that many subs operating in US waters. And I don't know how the, how that is currently relative to other jurisdictions, but the Coast Guard is fairly, very clear and stringent about, about deep sub operations in US waters.
So, if Ocean Gate, Inc. was responsible for the submersibles themselves, and Ocean Gate Foundation was responsible, as you said, for supporting researchers and basically research, how were the operations paid for, such as utilizing or paying for the support vessels and the vessels to tow the, the submersible out?
Well, as far as I remember, it was out of our Ocean, Inc.'s operating budget, and that was from investors, as far as I know. I could, I could be wrong, but, again, this wasn't, this wasn't our business model, right? Remember that we were, we were in the process of, at the beginning of a three-stage approach to get to a point where we could have a fleet of charterable subs. And it turns out, as we were doing our training wheels with Antipodes, we realized that that fleet of deep diving submersibles that we wanted to have in our own term vision, unfortunately, one of them was not going to be in US waters, because it was going to be too difficult to operate.
Were you still with the company when the Board of Directors began to form?
I think while I was there, we did have a Board of Directors. I think there were four or five of us, me, Stockton, and maybe two or three others. And, yeah, and I, yeah, I don't think we did much at the time, other than have some regular meetings, but yes, we did have a Board of Directors while I was there.
Did each of the members, other than yourself and Mr. Rush, have a specific role or responsibility within the board?
Yeah, that I don't remember. Stockton was chairman of the board, and he, so he ran the board. I was busy running the company, and so, I honestly didn't pay much attention to the board dynamics. My job was, you know, whenever we had a board meeting, was to present an update on company operations to the board.
Was anyone on the board at the time responsible for regulations or compliance?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Now, honestly, now, I'm trying to remember who was on the board during that time. But I don't think, I know at some point, we brought Admiral Lockwood onboard, former Coast Guard admiral, but I think that was after I left, and he certainly wouldn't have been responsible, quote unquote, for it. Yeah, so, no, I don't think so.
When did you depart, or when did you leave the company, and what factors influenced your decision to depart?
Yeah, so I ended up leaving permanently end of January 2013. Like I said, in August, Stockton and I made a, made a decision to transfer the CEO title from me to him, and he really wanted me to stay with the company, so he kind of decided to give me the COO title. I didn't think it would make sense for me to stay, so it was really ultimately my decision to leave. It was, in large part, what drove the change in CEO title from me to Stockton was that we were transitioning from that first phase to that second phase, and so, we were transitioning from an operations phase to an engineering phase, and that was really his strength, not mine, and it made sense for him to take the reins of the company. Also, because we were entering into an engineering phase, to go to your earlier question, we were going to have to raise more money. And anyone who's raised money into an early-stage company knows that at that stage, investors are not so much betting on the business model or on the technology, they're betting on the CEO. And since the investors were probably going to be friends of Stockton, or somebody who knew Stockton, it just made sense from a business strategy perspective for him to be CEO. So, we made that decision, and that was fairly easy decision. The tougher decision was whether or not I should stay. And he wanted me to stay, he wanted me to be COO, Chief Operating Officer. He wanted me be COO, Chief Operating Officer, and keep running the company. But it didn't make sense for a number of different reasons, right? One is, we weren't really going to be operating, we were going to be building, and there wasn't going to be much for me to do in terms of operations, number one. Number two, every time you take a founder CEO and bring in a new CEO and keep that other former CEO in the company, it's confusing to the team. It's almost like, you know, you, you run the risk of, you know, the new CEO telling the team to do something and, and they don't agree with it, so they go running to the other former CEO, and now you've got, you've got internal conflict already. It's kind of like children playing their two parents against each other. So just in general, it, I don't think it's good practice to, to keep the former co-founder CEO in the company. And, and also from a practical, from a practical standpoint, I was getting paid $120,000 a year at the time. And it just didn't make sense financially to keep paying me that kind of salary when I wasn't really going to be doing much other than, you know, overseeing business operations. It would have been much better for the company to take that money and hire maybe a couple of $60,000 a year engineers, or use the money to hire a senior engineer, you know? I don't know. But as a shareholder in the company, it just didn't make financial sense for me to, to stay. And even, and I have to say this, even though it was my decision, it was one of the hardest decisions I had to make to leave this company. Because while I was there, I told many of my friends, I thought this was going to be the last job I ever had. I could envision myself being with Ocean Gate until I retired for 30, 40, 50 years. And, and so leaving Ocean Gate was, was tough. It was tough for me psychologically, it was tough emotionally. It's, it's almost like anyone who started a company, you kind of treat your startup like, like one of your children, right? And at some point, for the good of the company, you have to leave and you have to let it go and let it grow. And, and honestly, looking back, if I had stayed, I think I would have just helped the company back. It would not have accomplished everything that it accomplished with, with me still there. So in, in retrospect, I was, I was glad I left for the good of the company. But, but yeah, it was, it was a difficult decision.
You had mentioned the word team and the effect that position changes would have on them. How many employees were there at Ocean Gate at the time?
Ooh, now you're asking me to reach way back. I want to say anywhere from 10 to 12. I, I don't know, somewhere in that, in that range.
And that was in, just so for the date, we're clear, that was in 2013 that you departed the company?
Yeah, so as we made these decisions to transition from operations to engineering, I think almost everybody, maybe there were a couple people back in, in Everett, the rest were in Miami. And, yeah, we were going to have to relocate some of them back to Everett, or we were going to have to let them go in Miami and hire new people back in Everett for, for different roles.
So you did move operations to Miami at some point?
Yes, in early 2012. So I think we lasted there not, not more than a year.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Did you retain any financial interest in the company following your departure?
Yes, I think from the beginning to this day, I think I still have my same 500,000 common shares in the company. I stopped keeping track of it ages ago because we raised so much money with preferred shareholders, with liquidity preferences above me that it, I just basically resigned myself to the fact that I'm probably never going to see anything out of, out of that equity stake. But yes, I think to this day, I still have my, my shares in the company.
So that concludes the testimony of Guillermo Sonline. Now, to speak a bit about it. This outro has been rewritten as, "After uploading the video initially and checking it over as I always do before I set it to live, I just wasn't happy with the script that I'd written. I found this testimony a tricky one to summarize and feel perhaps I was a little harsh in my original take of it. So apologies that this video is a day later than I promised. As I said at the start, this first half of Mr. Sonline's testimony wasn't exactly what I was hoping for. I think this was in part due to his answers and also the questioning, not digging too deeply, at least at the start, though this is hopefully something that will change in the second half. I did find it interesting, of course, to hear about Ocean Gate's forming, development, and plans for the future, and Mr. Sonline's involvement in those, as my prior knowledge of him was limited to what was covered in my original Ocean Gate documentary, that being that he was simply a co-founder and eventually left the company while retaining a minority stake. So it was nice to hear about the thoughts and drive behind the company and to fill in some of the blanks. I think one of the main problems I tried to get across in my first attempt at this script, something that was shared by many in the live chat of the hearing, was some of the lengths of Mr. Sonline's answers, which in itself is not a bad thing, but at times just felt like he had a lot to say, but much of what he said seemed to be very much surface stuff and overly decorated with unnecessary information or segues. Like his employment history, for example, which I know he felt was important to support his points afterwards, but took nearly 10 minutes of this video before he even got to the next question. I did say in my original script that I wondered if he was possibly trying to eat up time to fill his designated spot in the hearing and by doing so, avoid certain things that may come up. I'm not sure that this was actually the case, and I am in no way an expert in these public hearings, obviously. And I'm sure if time ran over, the Coast Guard would simply extend it or reconvene at a later time to ask the questions that they needed to ask. But I think it was also his wording at the start that kind of set the tone for me, too. When he thanked the Coast Guard for their work and then said his brief testimony would hopefully be of some help, even though he felt he would only be adding color to what others had already said. And to me, that just sounded like he already had one foot out of the door before the questions even started. Again, this could just be because he did leave the company and so may not have had any involvement at all with many of the choices and actions that led Ocean Gate down their eventual path. So it is difficult for me to say that he was trying to avoid anything or keep things light and surface level, though, just as some of my viewers and those in the Coast Guard's live stream chat have commented on past speakers and how they think they came across and their opinions of them, I just couldn't shake the feeling that this time there were layers, layers that were being kind of glossed over with some busy, wandering answers. It seems to me in a way that Mr. Sonline, especially considering his duties at Ocean Gate and those of his past employment, is a man who talks a good game, as the saying goes. Still, he did answer all questions that were given to him, so I can't outright say he was avoiding anything. I just found this first half of his testimony a little frustrating. Don't get me wrong, I think there is valuable information here, especially in filling in some of the blanks regarding that time when Ocean Gate was first founded and began their first endeavors. It was also very interesting to hear how none of the leaders in the field, despite their expertise, could produce what Ocean Gate required for what they had planned, that being submersibles that would operate independently of a support ship. And so Ocean Gate, and in particular Stockton-Rush, took it upon themselves to go down a different route and find, as Mr. Sonline puts it, "A better engineering solution," which seems almost laughable now, if not for the fact that people lost their lives considering the eventual makeup of Titan. This part of the testimony touched upon a few things that will be included in a standalone video I'm working on, where I speak about this subject and others, so I won't go into a huge ramble right now, but please know that that is on the way. I would be very interested to hear all of your thoughts on this testimony, as it honestly splits me and I find it hard to lean one way or another, given that I like to approach these with a certain level of neutrality. For example, Mr. Sonline gave enough information to answer the questions set to him, though I did feel, as those questions began to come at a faster pace and became more direct, his mood seemed to shift a little. And then, despite being able to recollect multiple small pieces of information from decades ago regarding his employment or certain dates, when things turned towards Ocean Gate at the end, there were then some instances of, "I don't know," or "I don't remember." Again, on one hand, I'm not saying this means anything negative necessarily and may in fact be the whole truth. And yet, on the other hand, to me, as a spectator of the hearing, Mr. Sonline comes across like a man who has been in many boardrooms and done a lot of speaking in his life to progress his companies, for example, or win over investors. So I do find this a tricky one to get my head around in terms of looking deeper and beyond what was simply said. I'm hoping, now that pre-Ocean Gate has been dealt with, that the second half of this testimony will contain some more harder hitting questions that dig a little deeper. Even if, given that Mr. Sonline vacated the company, it is simply more about Stockton-Rush, who was someone Mr. Sonline knew well, but has only been a minor part so far, and is someone we know had a huge impact on things. Apologies if this outro is still more rambling than usual. As I said, the first half of this testimony just left me feeling a little frustrated, but I think things began to change and improve when documents of evidence were started to be shown. And I expect more of that in the second half, so I will save speaking about those until our next video. Also, apologies that I haven't spoken more in detail right now about some of the topics covered here. Obviously, you have all seen and heard them now anyway, but I think I will have a better handle on things and have more of a conclusion to give when we cover the second half. So be prepared for a much longer outro. Anyway, I will leave this here for now. I thank you very much for watching this video and for supporting this channel. Part two will be up very soon to ensure that things are still fresh in our minds. So until then, bye for now.